Good evening, everyone. We now call a Rockdale County Commission meeting. Welcome. We will now call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM on August 14th, 2025. And at this time, we'll have our invocation by Mr. Danny Forrester. And then after that, we'll have our pledge of allegiance. Could everyone please stand for the invocation? Dear God, thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to get together here and have us a meeting. And hopefully, we can complete our agenda in a timely fashion. Thank you for everything. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Okay, at this time, we'll have roll call to determine quorum. And myself, John Lee Peterson, Chair, is present. This Melissa Yancey, Vice Chair.
Present.
Mr. Danny Forrester.
Here.
Ms. Angelique McClendon.
Present.
Ms. Ernestine Stovall-Goosby.
Here.
Okay. All right. So we have quorum. Okay, at this time, we need a motion to, for approval of the agenda.
I'm going to approve today's agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. The move for the approval of the agenda has been made by Vice Chair Melissa Yancey and seconded by Mr. Danny Forrester. Okay. Any discussions of the motion?
Please.
Any discussions of the motion? Okay, the question of adoption of the motion to approval of the agenda. As many as in favor say aye.
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 Those that say nay. Those that abstain. Ayes have it. As indicated, the motion carries. Okay, the next item is approval of the minutes. Need a motion for the approval of minutes?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Ms. Angelique McClendon has made a motion for the approval of the minutes. Second.
I second the approval of June 12th meeting minutes, 2025.
Okay. Vice Chair Melissa Yancey, second the minutes. Okay, approval of the minutes. The question is adoption of the motion to, for approval of the minutes. As many as in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Those abstained. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Indicate the, okay. The motion carries. Now, there's no unfinished business. So now we'll start with our new business.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, you missed the rule of procedures for public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Before we get to that, there's also another minute that needs to be approved. The July 10th.
The July 10th. Okay. So we need to make a motion for the approval of the July 10th minutes. Thank you.
Motion to approve July 10th minutes.
Okay, Ms. Melissa Yancey, Vice Chair, made a motion for the approval of the July 10th minutes.
Second.
Mr. Danny Forrester, second. On the motion, okay. The question on the adoption of the motion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Any abstain. The ayes have it. The motion carry for the acceptance of the July 10th minutes. Now we have the rule of procedures for public hearings.
Each speaker must sign their name to the appropriate zoning case sheet and fill out a public comment card to register your intent to speak prior to the start of this meeting. Each item of business shall be handled in order that it appears on the agenda, unless upon motion of the planning commission, the order is changed. A member of the planning staff will present each item to the planning commission and will further provide recommendation upon each item of business. The zoning applicant or the agent will state their name and address at the podium and will have 10 minutes in which to make his or her presentation. Any portion of their 10 minutes may be reserved for rebuttal following the opposition to the application. After the applicant's presentation, all registered speakers who wish to speak in favor of the application will then be heard. Prior to speaking upon the item, each registered speaker will state their name and address at the podium. They will also be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the applicant has made his or her presentation and the speakers in favor of the application have been heard, the secretary will then call upon the registered speakers in opposition of the application. The opposition shall likewise be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the public hearing portion is closed, no other speakers will be heard. As a reminder, speakers are to address the planning commission, not the applicant or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers shall be permitted. After all public comments have been heard, the planning commission may elect to hold general discussion. The planning commission will vote upon a recommendation that will continue forward to the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners' public hearings. Each speaker must sign their name to.
Okay, we'll start with the first item on the agenda. The first item on the agenda is R1, REZ 2025-04. Purpose to rezone 4.3 acres from R-1, single-family residential to OI office institutional for local commercial development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, board members. So our first case, as the chairman said, is REZ 2025-04. The property address is 1955 Southeast Flatshoals Road, and the applicant is David Letson. This is a 4.3 acre property developed with a single-family resident, and the applicant is seeking to rezone from R1, single-family residential to OI, office institutional for commercial development. The subject's property is surrounded by R1 mixed-use development and ONI. The mixed-use zone property to the north is being developed with a gas station. The ONI properties to the south are developed with medical offices. And to the east is a veterinary hospital, which is zoned OI. The future land use map is, or the future land use is also office institutional. The existing site currently has on it a single-family resident, and it is located at the intersection of Iris Drive and Avalon Boulevard. There are currently two access points to the property, of Flatshoals Road and Avalon Boulevard. And the site, and currently, no site plan was submitted because applicant is waiting to see who will purchase a property and then they will do their site plan for that. We've received all our internal and external reviews. And with those reviews, the fire department really has no comment at this time because nothing is established yet as to what they'll be doing with the property. Board of Education, because it will be commercial, it won't have an impact on the board of the school system. Stormwater. Once a specific use is determined, then stormwater department will determine what documents and what permits will be needed for stormwater management. And transportation, again, no comments at this time. Water and sewer, there is existing water on Flatshoals Road and Avalon Boulevard as well. And wastewater is serviced by Exchange Place Southeast. So they do have wastewater management. So this case is not a very complicated case. It's, they're trying to just rezone for ONI so that the owner right now wants to sell his property and that's what he determines would be the best zoning for him to get it sold. So based on all of our evaluation and going through all of that, we're recommending approval with conditions for him to be able to rezone to ONI. And it is in conformance with the surrounding area and what is being built right now, or what is existing as well. So if you, if the board has any questions for me, I'm here to answer any questions, or the applicant is here to do his presentation.
I don't.
No. Okay.
I don't know if I need this or not. Planning Commission, thank you so much. I do feel underprepared because I'm not going to stand here for 10 minutes. So very simple. It was my mother and father's home, childhood home, grew up in. The area's changed. Directly across the street, like she explained, is mixed-use. I put a picture on here. That's what it looks like for my front yard. That's not for a home. The intersection, the DOT, is widening all the way up with that widening project of Salem Road. We did this about, what's it been, about a year ago? And the planning commission approved C1. The reason we went C1 was because mixed-use wasn't available in the county, unless it was part of the Salem Road corridor, which we are not. I had a contract for a gas station for over a million dollars. Ready to go. Planning commission approved it. The commissioners denied it and didn't give a reason why. So ended up costing me a pretty good amount of money. So we went back to the drawing board, went back to the board, talked to them, or the zoning, talked to them. And ONI is the next option. Since C1 is not going to get approved, obviously, ONI is the next option. We found out that restaurants are allowed under ONI. So we have started to get some feedback from, there was a Canes and a Huey Magoo's that reached out, interested in the property. And honestly, it's just, it's not a residential location. I've got the PowerPoint, but like I said, it's future land use map shows ONI, and that's my, that's my front yard. You know, looking at a gas station. So if the interior of the house was able to be redone, but it's just, it was built in the 70s. Still got the original green shag carpet inside. So, you know, and I have a home in Loganville and just trying to, you know, get as much as I can for the property. And that's, that's really all I got on it. So. If y'all have any questions.
I don't.
No.
I do have one question. I think you can answer it. I'm just, so ONI, it does restaurants and plus it also would do office as well? So it'd do both of them? It falls up on an office space? It could be rent, it could be used for office spaces as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So it can use a restaurant and office spaces.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of the issues we've had, being the future land use map showed ONI. We haven't had a lot of people come forward because a lot of people at offices are looking for either a build-out lease. They're wanting me to build them office buildings, do a long-term lease. I don't have that ability to fork out a million dollars to build this location. And so they're, they're just not. The gas station was, it was a done deal, to be honest with you. They're purchasing property, wanting to build their own little building there. And so that's why when we went back to the drawing board, these restaurants are the same way. They kind of bring in their box, you know, they set up their restaurant, and it's got the access onto both roads already. But the office, we didn't get a lot of, a lot of interest at all from anybody that was looking for like a dentist office or, you know, a nursing home or anything that fell under ONI. Luckily, Rockdale County restaurants, quick-service restaurants, and all do. And so that's why we're pushing for ONI.
We have one person that signed up to speak, but I'm not sure if it's in favor or in opposition because it doesn't say. So Josh Wright. Oh, it's for the other case. I'm so, so sorry. So we have, we have. Okay, sorry about that. So we have no one that signed up, so you can go on with your discussion.
Okay. Need a motion consideration of the requests for the.
Rezoning.
Rezoning for O1, office institutional for local commercial development. Okay. We need a motion for the consideration of the rezoning of 4.5, of 4.3 acres from R1, single-family residential to OI office institutional for the local commercial development. We need a motion consideration.
I'm going to consider this request. I'm going to consider this request.
Okay. Vice Chair Melissa Yancey made a motion. Second.
Second the motion.
She made a motion to approve or deny?
To consider it.
To, for approval.
For approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Second the motion for approval.
Okay, Mr. Danny Forrester, second the motion. The question is on adoption of the motion for the rezoning. Are there any discussions on the motion? Okay. The question is on the adoption of the motion. As many as in favor, state by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Those that abstain. The ayes have it. The motion is carry. Okay. The next item on the agenda is item R2, CUP 2025-10. A request for Chi Tuma for a conditional use permit for 3601, Georgia Highway 212 Southwest, with tax parcel 013001031. A total acreage 20, AR agriculture residential for a resi, a recreational rather, and vacation campsite.
Okay, so, like the chairman said, this is a 20-acre property and it is Zone AR. And the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for recreational vacation campground. And the future land use for this property is medium density. On the screen there right now, you will see a site plan depicting the proposed site. The applicant is proposing to build three dome-style buildings on elevated deck, or decks. And they're proposing to widen the driveway to 20 feet to accommodate emergency vehicles. Also proposing that there will be no more than 12 guests and three vehicles on the site at any given time. And also, the project is proposing to preserve natural resources. There are amenities that are proposed, which are like fish-in ponds and hiking trail. The, this CUP or the conditional use permit application is. We can, we'll talk about that part in a little bit. But the internal and external reviews were received from all departments. The fire department, their review states that the driving surface that services the property allows for emergency responders to respond in a timely and safe manner. The on-site pond can also act as a backup water supply for firefighting if needed. The education department, the development will not impact the school system. Water and sewer, water and sewer are not available for this project or this site. The site will be served by onsite well for water and private septic system for wastewater. Stormwater management will require, will be required for all new developments. And transportation, they have said that Highway 212 is classified and maintained by Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT, and therefore, all access and related improvements must comply with GDOT procedures and permitting requirements. The proposed use is considered low intensity and is expected to generate minimum traffic impact. With going through this application with the applicant, we have gone through a thorough review of this application and staff is recommending denial for this. And this is based on code, the code in Article 2, Section 218-7 for accessory structure. One of the main reasons is that there are currently three accessory structures on the property already. And they are only allowed three accessory structure on a 20-acre lot. So they've already reached their limit for accessory structures. Also, all accessory structures, if we go back to that drawing, you may not be able to see it that clearly. It may be bigger in your packet. They are proposing to put the domes towards the front of the property. And accessory buildings are prohibited from going in the front of any prop, any home. So they would need to put it, put them either to the rear or to the side. And no accessory building shall be used for any type of human habitation because at this moment, ADUs are not permitted. So that's another reason. And all accessory structures shall be clearly subordinate to and supportive to the principal dwelling and should be located on the same lot. These domes will be on the same lot. Therefore, they are considered accessory structures to the principal home. So again, those aren't allowed because they already do have three accessory structures currently. So we're proposing, or we are recommending denial for this application. Any questions for staff?
If it's three already on the property, did they make notion of that they would take down any or anything like?
No, we've given them that option and the owner refused to remove any of the buildings that are currently there. We've also made other suggestions, but the owner insists on coming before the board to present their case for the, to add three more to the property.
So that would be a total of six structures.
Correct. So that's add in 100% more. Yeah.
I don't have any more questions.
Any other question? Okay, so we have Mr. Tuma here to present for this case.
Thank you. Just want to say, thank you for the opportunity to present this, represent Mr. Timothy Glenn. My name is Tey Tuma. I am a structural engineer licensed in Georgia and I've been working on this project for.
Could you speak up a little?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we've been working on this project now for more than a year and I want to thank the planning department staff. They've gone through so many iterations and they've been very helpful to help us to this, to come to this point. And they did have some recommendations, I think a couple of weeks ago. And the owner felt that we've already done so much work and it's expensive to have a licensed engineer working and he's paying the licensed engineer for this project. And, and he felt like he's already spent so much money, he would like to have the opportunity to present the case in front of the board. So just a brief summary. This is a 20-acre property. And on this 20-acre property, he is using less than, I think, 5% to 10% of the property itself. And the houses, the current house is located inside inward to the property. There is a pond in front of the property. And every structure that is added in that property have 100 feet buffer to the boundary line. And that 100 feet buffer to the boundary line is wooded. And then just also for context, in this 20-acre property, it's currently a tree farm. So it's all covered in trees. And there is no development being done in this property in terms of clearing out or, or those, except for the road that'll be installed. And the reason for installing, installing that road to widen it is because the fire department, the fire marshal made a comment that they need 20 feet wide access to bring in the fire equipment. So fire protection equipment, so the owner also accepted to try to comply, to be in compliance with the fire marshal's requirement. In addition to that, the construction of this is sensitive to maintaining this property naturally because it is really an eco-agro touristic activity, very low intensity, 12 guests. So there is no high activity. So even the decks, when they have been installed, each deck have four pedestals that goes to the ground, or columns that goes to the ground. They're all being stored just by drilling it and putting concrete. So they're not clearing or trying to change the environment. So the owner really focusing on maintaining a natural, beautiful environment. So the, the, the issue on accessory units is just our opinion, trying to present it, that by definition, the county's residential accessory unit cap of three structures applies to units that support the primary home on the property. The current accessory units, they are banned. One is a banned woodshed and a pool supply unit. The barn is where he stores his equipments. And then he has a shed where he starts a parking garage. And then the pool is a pool house that is used to, the pool pump and stuff like that is in there. So it's not like he doesn't want to. He really cannot, he needs those, those units to, for they are, they are usable and they are supporting the primary use of the resident. The domes do not support the primary use of the home. They are independent, non-residential accessory. They are independent, non-residential accessory structures that support the agro business. And this agro business is what we are applying for under this conditional use permit. So the domes are not really, they don't really form, the accessory units, we don't think that they really form as accessory use to support that primary resident. They're really, that's why we have the conditional use permit. So these domes, we want to, we want to request that they look more like barns in a farm that if you... I don't, I don't know if the farmers also have like limitation on how many barns or how many farm structures they can have on a farm. Because those support the farming business. So we're trying to also bring this report that we think this also support this agro-touristic business. And it's very low impact, they are three domes in a 20-acre property. It's not, he has no intention to increase this number of domes. He's, that's his primary residence. He doesn't have intention to change the nature of this environment, the 20 acres. He wants to maintain them as a beautiful place for people to come and enjoy. So AR zone agricultural properties commonly include, we already discussed that. So like we discussed, our glamping domes and extension of the, of this established planning logic of AR zones for agricultural properties commonly include structures that support the enterprise, not the residents, like we discussed earlier. So what this owner is trying to put to the board is to consider this accessory units that are being added as supporting to the conditional use permit approval, which is the agro, agri-business, the agri-tourism. So, let me see if I can see this. Another item that is also listed in the staff review is a requirement for annual and bi-annual renewal of this accessory, of this conditional use permit. And the owner thinks that it's, that aspect is kind of an administrative, it's going to be a burden. And they are requesting the creative financial burden, which can hinder long-term planning and investment. And banks and investors may see the risk of non-renewal as a reason to withhold funding. Initial conditional use permit approval with compliance monitoring is requested. So instead of having annual and bi-annual renewal of this conditional use permit, they're requesting that the CUP be approved with compliance monitoring. The county already has the right to revoke a permit if conditions are violated. This is the standard practice for similar low-impact uses. And the request to be treated similar to other low-impact farming businesses that receive a permanent CUP with compliance monitoring. All county departments that reviewed this plan gave no negative feedback. There was no negative feedback from any department that reviewed it. Any comments that were made were resolved. And also, the owner tried to be compliant by installing the main road or making it wider. This classification of the domes as standard accessory building was the single reason for the recommendation, recommended denial. The plan aligns with the county's current and existing land use plan and goals. Tree conservation, soil and water conservation, doesn't impact traffic, doesn't cause noise pollution. Distant from neighbors, support economic growth and tourism for Rockdale County. Tourism will support nearby restaurant, grocery stores, gas station, etc. So it's a very low-impact activity. And the only, I, if I understand the staff report, the only issue is that it is being considered an accessory unit to the main structure. And we're saying that we, we presenting that we think it's more an accessory unit to the conditional use permit, to the activity, the enterprise. There is, the owner, the owner doesn't intend to, I don't know if I can read it, he doesn't intend to install domes all over that property because it is designed for people to come and enjoy the nature itself. There are just trails to walk in there if you come.
Do you all have any questions or need any clarification on anything?
I mean, if you could just restate the reason for staff denial. Yes, I was listening to the previous presentation that sort of heard reasons why, I heard reasons why it would...
It's not.
It's not.
Here you go.
I'll use this one. If you could just restate the reasons for denial, because I think those were very clear. We heard a lot of reasons why, you know, of course, the owner would want approval. But I think the reasons for staff, the recommendation for denial are important as well because they were very clear and concise.
And I also think one of the reasons they're thinking that these aren't very clear is that they're saying that they're not accessory structures, which they're clearly accessory structures. So if you, if the board would look at this accessory use standards that you guys have been presented, you'll see all the reasons why the, the domes are accessory structures and which are prohibited. One of the main ones, as you look at the standards, is that they can't be in the front of the property, in front of the home. And it is a residential home, it's not commercial, so they, they're part of what's there currently. So they're not by themselves. And once accessory structures are on the same lot, then it has to adhere to, they have to adhere to the accessory use standards. And those can't be habitated by humans. We don't allow ADUs currently. And the, the barn, barns are supposed to be used for agricultural purposes, not for just storing anything, it's for agricultural use. That's the reason for AR, so you can do residential and agricultural use together. So domes will not be for agricultural purposes. It's not an agro-tourism area, it is a home currently. And if I may bring to your attention as well, we have come into some information concern in the property as well, that it is way out of, it's not being used for what it's supposed to be used for. Currently, it is being advertised as a luxury duplex, a luxury duplex home, where they are renting part of it for romantic getaway or family vacation. So even with that, they are using it for something that it should not be used for. It's not permitted. And if they want to do like short-term rentals, they would need to come in to get permits for that and that has not been acquired by them either. So in the context of financial hardship, I mean, the owner is creating his own financial hardship. It's, it has nothing to do with land hardship or topographical hardship. So that's what we're here for, it's not for any kind of financial hardship that the owner is already creating for himself. So to go back over the, the reasons that you asked for. One is they already have three permitted accessory structures. And what is on the tax assessor's website currently is showing one bath house and two utility buildings. So none of them says barns or anything like that. So they are already at their maximum of three accessory structures. And again, accessory structures are prohibited in the front of your, of your home or property. And no accessory building shall be used for any type of human habitation. And all accessory structures shall build in conformance or use like the same material as the home itself. If you look at number, letter C on the standard of use as well, it should, the structures in residential zoning district may be finished with any material, including metal, vinyl, siding, concrete blocks, providing the style and color of structure to match those of the principal structure and create visual cohesive cohesion throughout the property. The domes won't do that. So there are quite a few reasons why staff is recommending denial for this.
I have a question. This property, is it completely surrounded by trees and off the road or is it?
It is 20 acres, so it, and it is very well wooded. But there are, I think how it's situated, what I've understood from the applicant too is that they don't want to put them to the back because it will create hardship for the fire truck or to build stuff around there because to build driveway towards the back would be too expensive and water going back there, they would have to build another well. And so it's again, because of their financial difficulties, why they're putting it to the front. But our code dictates that it can't, they can't go to the front.
And the last question I have, I know you've offered suggestions, like taking down some of the structures. What were some of the other accommodations that could be made?
Another thing we'd suggested was that since it's 20 acres, they could maybe get it designated to be a campsite, a campground, and use the home as a part of the campground so that they can use a whole 20 acres because you need 20 acres for that. Because they couldn't subdivide just the home, it would leave them with 19 acres and we need 20 acres for that sense. So if they had done that, they could use the home as like a welcome center, use it for management to live in or just use the whole thing as a campground. But the owner decided that he doesn't want to even talk about that. So he wanted to come and bring this to you guys to see what you would vote on.
But the main goal of the domes is for them to live in the domes for temporary?
Yes.
For camping? For camping.
Which would be like a short-term rental?
And which we don't do that, without guidelines within Rockdale County, is that?
We did pass, we did do a tax amendment for short-term rentals in January or March, maybe January. So those can be done, but you have to come in and get your permits and get, you know, there are stipulations to get that.
But even beyond that, it's still that, that sees the number of structures that they currently have on the thing.
Exactly.
And so then there, there are argument is, they're going, they're arguing the point as to these are not actually structures. And that goes to a legal standpoint, is how do you define structures and stuff? Because the structures, anything that's built on a property, isn't that correct? I mean, generally terms, as a structure would be anything that's a separate building that's on the property.
From the home, yes, definitely.
Okay. And, 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 and I'm saying, well, the gentleman expressed that, well, everything came back negative with the... Sure. The gentleman spoke that everything came back negative from the fire department, school, whatever, does the water treatment, but the point of it is, it's against guidelines, it's what the standards are.
For the zoning standards.
For the zoning standards. So it's against, okay. All right, just want to clarify that.
Any other questions? No. I have two, someone sent in an email about, in opposition to, to this application. And we also have one person that signed up, again, I don't know if it's for or against because it's not there. I've put on your, in front of you, the opposition from the, from estate of William W. Parker to say that she is in opposition for this CUP. So Mr. Josh Wright, are you for or are you? Start if you, if you want to come here and let us hear you clearly.
I'm an adjacent property owner. So I think really the only concern that I had was as far as if it was going to be used for short-term rentals is for the property owner to provide some sort of barrier in between the property, between the properties. Not sure exactly what you call, but adjacent property owner concern was just for short-term rentals, especially with the hiking being mentioned, just some sort of barrier in between the properties just to prevent folks from, you know, wandering off, off the property. But neither, neither for nor against at this time, based on the current plan and where the, you know, structures are shown or proposed.
But what I'm getting is that when your recommendation was to be that they put a barrier between your property and their property?
Yes, that would be a condition that I would, I would recommend if I was to be in favor of. It would be that, so, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we need a motion for consideration for approval to rezone of 4.3 acres.
No, it's the next one.
I'm sorry.
Item R2.
The, the request for Chief Tuma for a conditional use permit for the 3601, Georgia Highway 12, 212 Southwest Tax Parcel, okay? And for the request for approval, we need a motion.
I want to make a request to deny. I want to deny based upon that it's, it's not in standard with the accessory use standards.
Okay, so...
You want to make a motion to deny? You can say that, whatever you want. I want to deny, I'll make a motion to deny. Item number R2, CUP 2285-01, I make a motion to deny.
Okay, Ms. Ernestine Stovall-Grusby has made a motion for denial of CUP 202501. Is the second?
We second, I think we second at the same time, so...
Okay. Mr. Danny Foster, Forrester has a second, that request for denial. Are there any discussions, discussions on the motion? Okay, the question is on the adoption of the motion to, for a conditional use permit. Those in favor say aye.
In favor of the denial?
In, in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we will need to know the reasoning for the denial.
I based my reasoning for denial on the standards that was presented before us, Article 2, accessory use standards, Section 218-7, accessory use standards, that is on Rockdale County ordinance. So it's based on that, to be in guideline with that. Denial is based upon it would be against these standards. As brought forth before us, it's against these standards.
Okay, does Mr. Danny Foster, Forrester also have to state reason? Okay. Okay, again, we'll vote, as many as in favor say aye.
Of the denial?
Those of the denial, those opposed, nay. Those abstain. The motion carries, that the, the motion is denied. The motion fails.
I'm so sorry, can we all do that vote again, just so we can see who vote for yea or who vote for nay?
How far you want us to go there?
You want to repeat the motion again?
You have created, you have, you have done... You have created, you have, you have done the motion for denial, Mr. Danny has seconded.
Right.
All in favor of the motion to deny?
To deny.
Say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries?
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is item R3, Text 2025-808, Purpose Initiation of the UDO Text Amendment, Text 20, I mean, the Text 205-08 to Article 2 of the Chapter 328 entitled 3 of Subpart B of the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia, Providing Updates to the Rockdale County Landscaping and Tree Protection and Replacement Ordinance.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. Before you tonight is a text amendment of the UDO regarding the landscaping and tree protection and replacement ordinance. As you may know, there has been some clear cutting going on on some of the properties that are in process of being developed, and so the reasoning behind this text amendment is to kind of get some, get a handle on that clear cutting. And so I provided an outline, a sort of a sheet that you can go along with that just shows the areas that were actually amended in the ordinance, you should have a red line copy of that in your packet.
I don't see it.
I see, mine's, mine's, I mean, I can look at the red line, I don't see the red line.
I don't, I don't see it either.
No red line. I can't pick up, worry.
I would just go over the areas that were changed in the document. Number one, the language county forester was replaced by the direct of storm water management or designate wherever that appears in this chapter 328. The language exceptional was replaced with specimen wherever it appears in chapter 328 of the section of the code. Section 328-22, a new subsection A9 was created entitled specimen trees with the language as written in the ordinance and as reflected on page five of the red line document, or of the document. Number four, section 328-26, the current title exceptional trees is replaced and is now referred to as specimen trees. Current subsection B of section 328-26 is deleted in its entirety and replaced with language referencing the requirement of a specimen tree survey plan. And you can see the bottom of page 10 of that particular section. And I'll pause for a minute if needed, so you can catch up.
So again, section, subsection B is being replaced by this, by here, the specimen tree survey plan, here, that, that under B, that's what it's being replaced by?
Correct.
Okay.
Need me to start to go through? Okay. Current subsection C of section 328-26 becomes subsection E. That should be on page 11. Section 328-29, additional language was added to the title, and so that becomes tree replacement fund for alternative compliance. Section 328-36, language is amended from administration, administrative standards to administrative guidelines, and the word standard is replaced with the word guidelines. And the last amendment would be section 328-37, timber harvesting cleanup of language, the word exceptional is changed to specimen and county forester is replaced with the direct of storm water management or designate wherever it appears in subsections of section 328-37. So those were the amended changes in that ordinance. And just to give you a little bit more background with this, the Department of Storm Water Management actually made these amendments, but in tandem, the planning and development department also reached out to a member of the Georgia Forestry Commission and received some comments from them, and to their review, the ordinance was pretty in good shape, but it just needed some fine tuning. And also, just to give you an update, we have been looking at, looking at bringing on an arborist at some point that would help us also be able to enforce the tree protection standards.
I, I just want to be educated a little bit, what do they mean by specimen trees when they say that? I mean, instead of saying exceptional and they replacing it with, is that, what does that actually mean?
The specimen tree would be a tree that actually, I wouldn't say native tree, but like a not, a fairly decent sized tree.
Okay.
That in some instances, maybe 50, sometimes over 50 years old, 100 years old.
Okay.
In some instances.
So they trying to retain those type of trees?
We're trying to retain the natural vegetative growth on the properties and keep those trees.
Okay, all right.
All right.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right, we need to make a motion on it. Make a motion. A motion to, for the approval of the initiation of the item R3, Text 2025-8, initiation of the UDO text amendment to Article 2 of Chapter 328 entitled 3 of Subpart B of the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia. We need a motion for approval of the initiation.
Move to approve. I move to approve.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. Vice Chair Melissa Yancy have made a motion. Ms. Ernestine Stovall-Gusby, second. Are there any discussions on this motion? Okay, the question is on the adoption of the motion, restated, will restate it, the motion for the initiation of UDO text amendment, Text 2025-8. As many as in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those that abstain, state so by saying abstain. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Now, I have a question on this next one, this, this next item is separate, item three, item R3, that's also a?
And actually, that should be item R4.
Okay, that should be item R4, okay. Thank you. Okay. Next item, R4, Text 2025-9, Purpose and Ordinance to amend the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia, Subpart B, Unified Development Ordinance to Establish Architectural Standards for Residential Uses to Appeal Conflicting Ordinances to Set an Effective Date for Other Purposes.
Sir, before we move on, can you just make an amendment to this agenda so we can change the numbering, seeing that it was incorrectly numbered?
Okay, it was incorrect, okay, we need a motion to amend the agenda?
I make a motion to amend the agenda, item R4, Text 2025-09, I mean, to return to R3 to be considered R4, Text 2025-09, and to be sequential in order going forward.
Ms. Ernestine Stovall-Gusby has made a motion, you need a second?
I second.
Okay, Mr. Danny Foster, Forester, second the motion. Are there any discussions? Okay, on the question of the adoption of the motion to amend the agenda item, as many as in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those that abstain, the ayes have it, the agenda change. Okay, next item, I'll read it again, item R4, Text 2025-9, The Ordinance to amend the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia, Subpart B, Unified Development Ordinance to Establish Architectural Standards for Residential Uses to Appeal Conflicting Ordinances to Set an Effective Date and for Other Purposes.
Yes, so this ordinance is before you to establish, as you stated, some architectural standards regarding residential uses that would be for attached as well as detached residential homes and manufactured homes as well. And with us tonight, we have a consultant who's actually working with us on the UDO, and she also helped draft this ordinance, so any questions that you may have, she is here to answer.
I don't have any questions, I want to just say, this is, this is welcome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Rebecca Kiefer, Kiefer, with CPL, helping draft, helping draft the modified Unified Development Ordinance. So just wanted to give a really brief overview of what this does and how this will work kind of in concert with the UDO amendments. So right now, concurrent to this, through the Board of Commissioners, they will eventually see a revision to the moratorium, the residential moratorium that's in place, and what that will do is keep the, as drafted, will keep the moratorium on any multi-lot development rezonings, the like, but will release the moratorium for any single lot development. But this going through concurrent with that is scheduled to be adopted so that any of those lots that are allowed to go through for permitting after that moratorium expires will be covered by this ordinance, and so these are just architectural regulations where the applicability covers any single-family, attached, detached, multifamily, and manufactured homes.
They said that you was a consultant, is there any other county that you work in and done similar work for?
Yeah, yeah, so currently, we're working in Madison County and Barrow County rewriting their UDOs or creating UDOs from zoning ordinances and land development ordinances.
Okay.
I'm still reading.
I don't have any more, I don't have any questions.
So anything that comes, I think this may be for, anything that comes to us going forward, but this has to be implemented first, and then anything that comes to us going forward, we have these guidelines incorporated, right? Anything that we see going forward, we have these guidelines?
That is correct. Once those are adopted, then going forward, those will be the guidelines that we would work from.
And this is if we presented on the 28th, right, August of 28?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no, if there are no further questions, he'd a motion to approve the Text 2025-9, an ordinance to amend the Rockdale County, Georgia, Subpart B, Unified Development Ordinance to Establish Architectural Standards for Residential Uses.
I move to approve.
Okay. Ms. Melissa Yancy, Vice Chair, move to approve the motion, and Ms. Angelique McLendon, second. Are there any discussions on this motion? Okay, the question is on the adoption of the motion, for Text 2025-09, an ordinance to amend the Rockdale County, Georgia, Subpart B of the UDO. As many as in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those that abstain, abstain. The ayes have it, the motion carries. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda would be item, uh, R, I guess that would be R five, P P two, P P two-five dash zero one seven one, purpose preliminary map for Sterling Manor, Highway one thirty-six, will be fifty-six lot division.
So, um, case P P twenty-five dash zero one seven one preliminary plat for Sterling Manor, the subdivision of fifty-three lots. And we have, that's the site plan right there, we've, um, brought them to all that were technical reviewers who have all approved the preliminary plat. Um, I have Mr. Tyler here. If you guys have any questions concerning this development. As before, like this is really a formality for the votes and for the chair to sign the plats, but if you have any questions, he is here and willing to answer any questions you may have.
These, uh, soil profiles, what is, are they different?
I'm sorry.
Soil profiles, there's several pages of these soil profiles.
He's one of the engineers, so he may be able to answer you.
Yeah, it's, I apologize, Tyler last, or with LJ, I'm just filling in for the engineer that was working on this. What was your question, sir?
Soil profile. Are they, uh, different qualities, why are they listed separately?
Yeah, I apologize, I can't answer that question right now, I'm not familiar with that aspect of the development, uh, that's information I can get you, but as Ms. Tuckman mentioned, this was reviewed and approved by all the different sections, uh, prior to coming here tonight.
I believe the soil part of it has to do with environmental health, because these will be going on septic, so it's, um, environmental health would have...
Should be a problem, yeah, if it's going on septic, uh...
No, that's why everyone has gone through and approved already, they've done their, um, comments and get back the whatever adjustments or amendments that they needed, and so they've all been approved by all the other departments.
Okay. These are sing, these single-family residences?
Yeah.
Are they single-family?
Yeah, it's just fifty-three traditional, single-family homes. It's about points seven, seven units per acre, every lot's closer to, uh, three-quarters of an acre or larger. As I mentioned before, it's septic, so very straightforward, traditional subdivision for large lots.
Okay. Right?
Thank you.
No more questions, thank you.
I have a question for staff. Um, so, I mean, you mentioned this formality, so I guess what would be the, what would we be considering as the consideration? Um, you know, because the, the other votes we're considering, whether to approve or deny, uh, what would be our role for the preliminary?
Well, typically for the preliminary plats, you guys would have had it in your, um, packets to review and go over to see if you have any questions to ask the developers. Um, it's not up for public hearing, that's why it's just, um, for the votes, with the intention of you having read it and gone through it before you got here.
What if we have questions and we don't like the answers? Like we just had about the soil, I mean, what are our options? I mean, are we just saying?
You can always make your recommendations, for sure, but, um, the, these are, like, it's a preliminary stage where it goes through all the, the departments that review them, stormwater, um, fire, transportation, um, environmental health, and whatever they came up with, they send it back to the developers, they fix it and came back, and so, at this timeframe, we're only doing the votes. If moving forward, things change and they want to make it into, um, like a public hearing, that can always be suggested or recommended for the commissioners, and so, like, we're going through the U D O change right now, we can add that, but currently, it's just for votes, just to approve, that you've seen it and...
The prelim, okay, preliminary maps, just this is approval.
So, the, the votes are to say that we have seen it, we have reviewed it, not to say that we like the plan, or the, the plan, or the, uh, planned use for the site.
You can always make your recommendations, if you see something, say something, but, um, you can make your recommendations on it and we can still vote on it, but we just don't have a discussion with, um, the audience.
Like, for example, say if I say, oh, well, I think this, you know, because there's no recommendation as far as whether or not fifty-six lots here might affect the schools, right, because we're not at that point.
We're not at that point, yeah.
So, it's almost, I guess my question is why let it get to that point if we...
I think we've been by that point, right, because if, then we get that point when, before it was approved, right? If any presented the plan prior?
They, they would have, especially if they had gone through, like, rezoning stage, then it would have been, that would have been discussed before, and it's just a matter of showing you what is going to be on the ground, so, and what they're proposing for the development. It's still going to go through, um, different stages where they're going to do, like, land disturbance permits, and then they're building, and in that, in those stages, then changes can be made, they will show, like, what they're building, the, the elevations and all of that, the vertical part of it, but as it is right now, it's just a preliminary plat to show what their intentions are, what the size lots are, where the infrastructures are, stuff like that.
So what work, so work has been done on that site, so we drove by that site, no work has been done, or work has been done?
No work has been done currently, because it hasn't gone through the, um, L D P stage yet, and that's where you start clearing and doing the land disturbance.
I just have a lot of questions, because it's sort of like you let, so then it goes, it gets cleared, lands disturbed, all of that stuff has happened, but it's still affect, you know, all the schools have trailers, right? And so, you still are affecting, despite what might come out of the school board, what's, you know, what's communicated to the school board, from the school board, all the schools have trailers, so they're already beyond capacity. So, any residential development would likely affect school capacity. Um, so, is, has it already been considered, or is that considered once they've already started to build and invest money?
Generally, once it's reached this stage, it, those things have already been talked about and decided on, so that would have been mentioned before, yes, and voted on before.
I think this may help you out, sometimes, that's why we gotta be, make, because be mindful of it, some things that we may have done a year ago, now the school, we may, if the school was at normal capacity, now they're, now they're overcapacity.
Right.
So, by the time it gets back up and a preliminary pack, it has different things that impact it, but I think you're trying to see, has, it was considered about the school and not prior, but it's just different now, is what I'm thinking, okay.
They all have trailers, though, and the school board is, when they, when they, when the planning department is saying, hey, school board, is the school at capacity, oh, no, it's not, that just means the trailers aren't full, because they have, when you have trailers, there are, I think we've normalized trailers for schools to the point where we feel like, oh, the trailers aren't full, it's, it's cool, we don't have to add more trailers, because you already have beyond the capacity of what the school is. That's just one of my pet peeves.
But just to be clear, like, just like we're doing rezoning today, and we've talked about what they, the, the Board of Education has said, this has gone through that process already, and you also have to take in consideration too, that if more people are moving in this year, one set have graduated this year as well, so they're making space for whomever is coming, and you have to look at it that way, but, yeah, it has already gone through the process of, um, zoning, and they've taken all of that into consideration when they voted. Okay.
Okay. There's no, go ahead.
Go, you go ahead.
Okay, there's no more questions. Uh, we need a motion for the approval of the preliminary plat for Sterling Manor, Highway one thirty-eight, uh, with fifty-six lots, the subdivision. Need a motion. A motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve item R five, P P two-five dash zero one seven one.
Okay, Ms. Ernestine Stovall-Goosby has, uh, made a motion, uh, for this item.
A second.
Okay, Mr. Danny Foster has second, it's a motion, his motion. Uh, and, uh, are there any discussions at this time? Any discussions? Okay, the question is on the adoption of the motion, okay, for the preliminary plat for Sterling Manor, Highway one thirty-eight with the fifty-six lot subdivision, as many as in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have one nay. Okay, any abstain? Okay, the ayes have it, uh, so the motion carries by the majority, that one nay. Okay. If I'm not mistaken, the last item on the agenda is, uh, R five, P P two-five dash zero one seven seven. Uh, the purpose is preliminary plat for enclave at Parker Townhouses, sixty-six town home units.
Okay, and this is R six, actually, so this is for the enclave at Parker Town Homes. This plat was previously approved, and, um, originally, this was going to be a rental complex, but the developer has decided to make it a for-sale development. So, um, Mr. Mark Walton will be able to answer any of your questions that you may have about this one.
Good evening, um, I'm Mark Walton with Patrick and Associates, and, um, Ms. Tuckman, brought out the important parts. This property was rezoned about a year ago, and it was rezoned for townhomes, and it's very rare, um, but the Board of Commissioners allowed this to be a for-rent product, and the developer was proceeding on that way, and then, at a certain point, uh, he had him, he was approached and decided to go for, for sale products. So, instead of just being owned by one REIT, it will be Rockdale County citizens, residents that buy the individual little lots. So, this one, the other one, there's probably been no work done, on this one, there has been work done, the streets are in, um, and at the time, it went before, it went to the school board, they looked at it, and they provided numbers, and, uh, that's in those numbers that you're now seeing for the rezonings, when they say, hey, there were the other ones planned, these are some of the ones that were planned. It's got detention ponds and utilities and roads, and I'm here to answer any questions.
How many units were, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna ask, what made the developer go from all rental to, I mean, wow, you know, just, that individuals could actually purchase homes?
Um, I'm sure ultimately it was financial, but there's a, the builder, the builder that developed it has a building company, and he recently sold his building company to another building company, and that's what they like to do.
Okay, do, do you know any, and this might be for staff as well, are there any other all rental developments that are going up, that's just for rent only, in the county? No?
I'm, I'm not aware, most everything is a for-sale product, please.
Okay, thank you.
I was just wondering, when he went from rental to townhomes, did he decrease in the number of units, he kept the same?
The units all stayed the same.
Okay, all right.
So, everything pretty much stayed the same, except the fact that they are now going to be available for purchase as opposed to rentals?
Yes. And the streets, it was going to be owned by one entity, now the streets will be owned by the H O A, and they will be responsible for the maintenance of the streets. So, each of the sixty-six residents that live in there, they'll have to pay a portion of the street maintenance, um, and it will be gated, um, I'm talking.
So, the H O A will pay for the lawn care, for that piece of the lawn care?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any more questions? Okay. Need a motion, uh, for approval of the preliminary plat for enclave at Parker Townhouses, sixty-six townhouse units. Need a motion for the approval.
I move to approve enclave at Parker Townhouses.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, Vice Chair Melissa Yancy, uh, made the motion for approval. Um, Ms. Ernestine Stovall-Goosby, second. Okay, are there any discussions in this motion? Okay, the question is on the adoption of the motion, uh, for the, uh, approval of the preliminary plat for, uh, enclave at Parker Townhouses, sixty-six townhouse units. As many as in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed, nay. Any abst, abstain? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Okay, that's it. Okay, if all hearts are clear, we need to make a motion to, for this, uh, meeting, uh, the Rockdale, uh, Planning Commission meeting, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six P M, be adjourned. Need a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Okay. Ms. Melissa Yancy, Vice Chair, uh, move, uh, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Danny Foster, second. Uh, as, as many as in favor, state by saying... As many as in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, nay. Okay. No one abstain? The ayes have it, and this meeting is now adjourned.